I'd like to welcome all of you, all the candidates and fellow citizens, to the League of Women Voters of Macomb County Candidate Forum for the City of East Point. So the races tonight are for City Council and Mayor. My name is Kathy Corr. I'm the Candidate Forum Coordinator for the League of Women Voters of Macomb County. Tonight's forum is being co-sponsored by the East Point Roseville Chamber of Commerce. We would like to thank East Point High School for allowing us to use this auditorium, and to East Point High School students for filming this forum. This forum is for the city general election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. At this time, I would like to introduce this evening's moderator, League member Maria Rivera. Thank you, Kathy. The League of Women Voters is a national organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens and government. The League neither opposes nor supports candidates or political parties. We welcome all citizens aged 16 and over to membership. My name is Maria Rivera. I will be serving as moderator this evening. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. The format was reviewed with and agreed to by each candidate prior to the forum. Tonight's forum consists of four candidates running for two four-year city council seats. There are five candidates running for one four-year term for mayor. City Council will go first, followed by those running for mayor. Please note this forum is about the presentation of the candidates and their opinions to enable voters to make an informed decision at the polls. I'd like at this time to introduce your candidates. City Council candidates, there are four candidates for two open seats. Each are for four-year terms. In alphabetical order, we have Harley Curley, Larry Edwards, Mary Hall Rayford, and Sarah Lucido. The order of seating tonight was determined by a drawn lot, which occurred just prior to this forum. We will begin with the candidates' opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. We will start with a two-minute opening statement with Sarah Lucido.
Hello, my name is Sarah Lucido, and I've had the pleasure of serving everyone here on City Council for the past four years. I'm running for reelection in November. The reason why I'm running for reelection is because I believe that my job is not done. I want to keep moving forward with the things that I have started, including our parks. For the last hardly ten years, we've wanted to be able to come out of recession or in a recession. We had to make a lot of big cuts, and the first thing that was helped was our parks. Moving forward, I really want to focus. I'm starting to bring our parks back off the code, make sure that they're handicap accessible and handicap-friendly for everybody. I also want to revitalize some of our parks by maybe even adding some new structures and things like that. Also, I want to move forward with our economic development. We started a tax conversion committee. We want to start getting our tax conversion homes fixed up and selling them and increase homeownership in the City of East Point. I've been working on this for over a year now, and I'm hoping to be able to see it through. Along with that, we want to hire an economic development manager, and we're hoping that they can help us to bring more businesses to the City of East Point. I pride myself as a councilwoman, and I hope you also vote for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucido. Next we'll hear from Mr. Harley Curley.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Harley Curley. My wife and I have lived in this city for 55 years, same house located on Lexington. And this coming May, we will have been married 60 years. So our hearts and our souls and our feet are planted into this, into the city. I spent nine years on the school board, two years on City Council, and 12 years as mayor. I'm running for an open seat, and the reason I'm running is because I feel that that 23-years experience is going to help our City Council and our city move forward as we should. Some of the things that I'm looking for are getting our residential streets repaired. You all can shake your head, yet you know what I'm talking about. Like you said, there's a lot of residential streets that need repair. Also, I think we can have a closer relationship with the school board. I mentioned last week that I think that we ought to meet quarterly, but rather than having nine elected politicians at one table at the same time, that the school board would select three people, and the council would select three people to have that quarterly meeting and report back to each unit as a whole. I love East Point, and you can call it Orange, or Aaron Township, or Halfway, or East Detroit, or East Point. I love this city. And yes, there is, there was an Orange. So if anybody doubts that or never heard it before, see me after the forum, and I'll tell you all about Orange. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Next, we will hear from Mr. Larry Edwards for two minutes.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm here today as a candidate who's running for City Council. Because I'm a person who has great concerns as a resident and as a citizen, and our city is being ran and looked at and ran by the officials where I have great concerns where I reside at. Also, my focus would be is to help our city to be exceptional, as I know it can be, as well as in parties that are our young people as a part that are being processed and in this development. So I would just like to let you know that I thank, I thank people that have helped the city to where it still stands yesterday, that's striving, of course, and what have you, that have dedicated their life to it, being committed to the City of East Point as a family town or a family city to keep it to where it is now. In regards to the neighborhoods, because the neighborhood is the, is the, is the bread and butter of our city, East Point, and the neighborhoods have been neglected completely. I appreciate the, what's been done for the downtown and for the main streets and for some of the county areas and what have you, but without the neighborhood, we don't survive. And so we need to look more into doing something towards the neighborhoods and putting money back in the neighborhoods and supporting the neighborhoods, bringing back the Mar and Paul shops and what have you, and to be more involved and make it where everybody can have a part in it. East Point has a level of, from poor to very wealthy, and we have to find a way to where we can all come together and all be able to rely upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. For Mary Hall Rayford, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I am Mary Hall Rayford. I am relatively new to the city. We've only been here since 2012, but I can tell you that my heart lies here simply because of its motto of being a family town. I was raised in a small family town in West Virginia, and now I'm here, and I look forward to being here until that time comes. And when it does, I will know I've had an opportunity to be and serve a resident of a great city. I'm running because I believe I have something to contribute to this city. I've met a number of residents. We've had a number of talks, and I know that there are many who don't think that they can come to City Council and be heard. And when I heard that last year, I decided that perhaps a voice for the people needs to be heard on City Council. I know I can be that voice. I'm not intimidated by anyone. I will not be bullied, and I won't back down. I will serve the residents of East Point because I understand what it means to be a public servant. I'm a retired educator, and I'm still working, and I'm looking forward to doing everything I can to make this work for all families in East Point.
Thank you very much. The next question will go first to Mr. Curley. Mr. Curley, where do you see the city in your first four years of office?
Where do I see the city in the first four years in office? Well, one thing for sure is my, my priority is to get the local streets repaired. There is money out there that we can find, particularly from Washington DC. It's just a matter of knocking on the right doors and seeing the right people. I have a strong feeling about if we can, if our government can give billions and millions of dollars to hundreds of countries, we can give millions of dollars to our local cities to fix their streets. I also want to have a better relationship with the school board. It's been okay so far, but you know, they're the biggest landlord in the city. They employ more people than anybody else in the city. There's no reason why the school and the city can't really get together and come up with some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Mr. Edwards, where do you, where do you see the city in your first four years?
Like Mr. Curley said, I would like for the city to see more attention for the neighborhoods because the neighborhoods have been totally neglected. Our streets are in shambles in a lot of places. I vaguely know how they go about repairing the streets and the neighborhoods and what have you, but I looked into it, and it was on a scale of one to 10, as well as this was something that was adopted from Wisconsin. And in doing that, they have, do their pre-preventive maintenance, meaning that if the streets are in good condition or even in perfect condition, they, they look into spending money towards that, rather than those streets that need, that are in shambles, that actually need the work, they just let that go till it's almost come to an emergency time for them to fix it, rather than putting money in those streets that really need it. Trees, trees, a lot of attention that needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Hall, where do you see the city in your first four years?
In the first four years, I'd like to see a coming together of all the residents so we can together make this a really great city. I know we all have challenges. One of the challenges I've seen is basically the safety of community. I am definitely involved with our neighborhood watch groups, and I know we need more police officers, so we need to find that there. Every time we want better services, we need to be able to fund it. So I'm all about finding money and doing what needs to be done for the safety and betterment of all residents.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Lucido, where do you see the city in four years?
Over the next four years, I see the city of East Point continuing to strive. I feel that the residents in the city have really come together and have really stepped up in the last seven, eight years. They've started to get more involved, and I want to continue seeing this happen. I think East Point is a great home for my family, and I believe it can be a great home for anybody. And I think moving forward, that we're going to see more and more community involvement, more and more community events, and more and more residents getting to know their neighbors, going out and helping each other, and making East Point a great place as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Lucido. Next question will go first to Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, this is kind of a two-fold question, so please, please name the biggest opportunity facing East Point and what your ideas are for exploiting this opportunity, and what's the biggest problem, and how are we going to fix it?
One would be, safety is one of the highest and what have you. East Point, 32,000 people or so, publicly in the limelight, we're getting, we're becoming negative. We're getting a negative outlook from, from the nation, and they are, we're in, we're in the limelight for the wrong reason. For, we have one case with police brutality. We've had another case with, there are several and what have you, but I believe that with the, with us coming together as neighbors and what have you, this being a community neighborhood and what have you, that if we stand together behind our police, new sergeant, new chief, then we can put it together.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Hall, the biggest opportunity facing East Point and how are we going to exploit it versus the biggest problem and how are we going to fix it?
The biggest opportunity right now would be for everyone to get more involved and engaged in the process of a democracy, because if it's only when we get involved that we can truly affect change, and I would love to see that change occur. One of the biggest priorities I think we need is to make sure that we have a viable school district in this city, because any time a realtor confronts a potential client, and they have school children, the first question they want to know is, how is the school? So we need to work together in partnership with the district and work for everyone, especially our children.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Lucido, the biggest opportunity and how to exploit it and the highest priority problem and how are we going to fix it?
East Point has a ton of great opportunities. It's really hard to pick just one. I guess I would start with the location of East Point. East Point is located about 15 minutes from downtown. It's a great place for people who work downtown, commute to and from work, easy access on and off the freeway, and we're also a friendly neighborhood community. I would say one of the biggest problems with East Point is that some of the candidates had already mentioned this evening, is finding funding for roads. Of course, roads is the top priority in East Point. It's a top priority in the whole state of Michigan. Finding funding for roads is definitely very important, and hopefully in the, within the near future, the state will help us be able to achieve our goals of getting more work done on our roads than we already can afford. We do try to maintain as many roads as we can every year with what we can fit into our budget, but police and fire obviously are always our number one priority.
Thank you, Ms. Lucido. Mr. Curley, the biggest opportunity and exploiting it and the highest priority problem and how to fix it?
Well, first, first of all, I'm always one that thinks that the glass is half-full when it isn't, but that's my, that's always been my, my opinion. Does the city have some warts? Yeah, but you know what? I think the city is doing a great job. I think that the police are doing a great job. I think the opportunities that the different fraternal organizations offer and the city offers and the City Council offers our citizens is unique. There is always something going on at Memorial Field or Kennedy Park or Shamlock Park. There's all these things going on, so I guess I'm, I'm looking at the city with, with the idea that the glass is, is half-full. The lowest thing again, besides the local streets, I think that we can have some way to get our folks to, how do I say this? Clean up the backyard. Clean up your backyard, and I know there's restrictions that our code enforcement officers have about not going.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. I know it's not my turn.
You're gonna have to stand up. I can't even see. Why I say that?
Thank you very much. Ms. Hall, first, the next question will go to you first. How will you address the issue of legacy costs to the city?
One of the things that we have to be aware of, say, time brings about change. There cannot be any progress without change, but not all change brings progress. So we need to look at how to best use all funding in order to make the city work for everyone. There are many things that I would love to say that I won't have time to say in the time I have, but I think we need to look at what we can do to make it better going forward, better use of our spending.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Lucido, how will you address the issue of legacy costs?
Legacy cost is a very big issue in many, many communities in the state of Michigan. Past councils have not realized the amount of legacy cost that we were running into during this time, and we are not, we're not prepared and are not prepared to handle it. We have been making a bunch of changes every year to balance what we owe in legacy costs because it is going to be a continually growing problem if we don't start to handle it now.
Thank you, Ms. Lucido. Mr. Curley, legacy costs.
Well, I think Sarah hit right on, right on the nail. Yes, that's a problem, but again, it's a problem that's not going to be fixed, what do they say, overnight? Not going to be fixed in six months or even a year. I can tell you this, that the council that we have right now are working very diligently on this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Mr. Edwards, how will you address the issue of legacy costs to the city?
Again, I think when we come together and put our minds together and our backs together and have a concern for the city, the neighborhood, and what have you, is beginning as a start. We're not an industrial place, so really all we have basically is the neighborhood and what have you, and we strive from there, from the Mar and Paul shops, from supporting East Point and what have you, and go from there and look at, and then be able to see and, and look at what else we can bring in from that point and what have you, but first support the neighborhoods to let them strive and come back together as it has always been and what have you, and I think that we can move from there, and once we move from there, we can draw those people in. I think when we bring in new businesses, that we involve them in being a part of this city, of East Point, to be able to adapt certain things and to be able to invest in certain parts of East Point.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Next question first to Ms. Lucido. What is your stance on allowing marijuana dispensaries to open in our community?
I believe that we should allow medical marijuana facilities in our community. I'm only going to address the medical marijuana facilities at this time only because of the fact that the recreational marijuana laws, I'm still not 100% clear on to make a determination on how I would be able. But I do know that the voters of East Point voted to have marijuana in the City of East Point, so I am for limiting the amount of facility we have in the city, putting them in areas that are not extremely close to residential areas that would be appropriate to have medical marijuana facilities in the City of East Point.
Thank you, Ms. Lucido. Mr. Curley, your stance on marijuana dispensaries?
Well, Sarah's right. The citizens did vote to allow medical marijuana into the city, but I have a question. What's the hurry? Why are so many people in our city really breaking their backs to get this done yesterday? This is, right now is in the planning commission's table. They're looking at the situation. They want to go around to the state and talk to other communities what's going on. They suggested tabling this thing until January. So if it's January, or February, or March, what's the difference? That it's eventually going to happen, but there's so many things that they got to discuss. How big is the building going to be? Where's it going to be located? How many employees are they going to have? Where would they be not allowed to, to put up their building to sell marijuana? So there's a lot of things to do, but we need to just sit back, let the planning commission do what they have to do, turn it over to the council, and then let the council take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Mr. Edwards, what is your stance on marijuana dispensaries?
I'm one that's against it, but since it has been voted in here in the City of East Point, I would like to see that it be set up to be the best for this city, that this city would have priorities in regards to being the ones that will set it, have first choice in being the ones to set it up, and that will be able to benefit from it, and those that would happen to come from outside and what have you, that they would, there would be guidelines and rules, especially specifically, that will help East Point to where not just allow it in and everybody in and just let it have its way without being able to have strict guidelines in regards to what's coming into the city, that it would be appropriately looked at and properly figured out and understood just what's entailed to where it will be able to get out of hand.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Hall, what is your stance on marijuana dispensaries?
At this moment, I fully support the marijuana dispensaries for medical use. I've talked to a number of residents in the city who suffer from chronic pain, and I wish no one to suffer needlessly. I believe that when the voters make a choice, it is the responsibility of all elected officials to follow the dictates of the voters, not me. So I will stand for and with the ordinance as it's created to support use of medical cannabis for those residents who need it and it needs to be accessible to them.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Next question will go first to Mr. Curley. What is your definition of diversity, and how would you build a relationship with the school board?
Well, I have to, second question first. Relationship with the school board is transparency, number one, that they should and ought to know what the city's doing, and we ought to know what they're doing. And again, repeating myself, that we need to have a regular meeting with, with the members of the school board to see what we can do for them and what they can do for us. Diversity, wow, that's, that's a good question, because the more diversity you have in the city, the better the city's going to be. So the new employee that they're going to get is going to help them a lot, but we need, we need, there's things that we need in our city that we don't have, so we need to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Mr. Edwards, your definition of diversity and how would you build a relationship with the school board?
Diversity is certainly needed because there are many different forms of walks in life in our city, and we can all come together and work as one and be able to help one another as being neighborly, as being in a community, and as far as coming together with the school board. I think both can work together, council and school board. There are many foundations, Skilman Foundation for one, federal grants, private foundations and corporations that I believe is being highly overlooked that could be used to rank about skilled traders. I know I worked on a Skilman Foundation with a company or with a small business that where they paid the students, I mean, they paid the business to hire students in their workforce.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Hall, definition of diversity and how would you build a relationship with the school board?
The definition of diversity would encompass recognition and acknowledgement of all people from all walks of life. We are all different. We need to create, and we all need to respect that difference and embrace it, because the more we embrace diversity, the greater we become as a whole. The one thing I'd love to see the school board do as it works with the city is to create more cultural events that encourage all people to come out and participate, because until we get everyone to participate, we're not going to be as great as we could be.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Lucido, definition of diversity and building a relationship with the school board?
I don't think I can repeat Ms. Ray McCall's definition of diversity, because they think she nailed it right on the head. It's everybody coming together. It's everybody coming together, doesn't matter religion, race, anything. Just working together for the same common goal, which is keeping East Point great. When it comes to building a relationship with the school board, I believe continuing, supporting each other. The city, I believe, supports the schools, supports the schools' decisions, and returns the schools to support the city. Keeping lines of communication open is also very important when it comes to working with schools. We've been trying to have meetings with the school board on an annual basis and also trying to incorporate different programs with the students and the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Lucino. Next question will go first to Mr. Edwards. Do you support the school district sinking fund?
I would have to know more about that school district I'm in, South Lake, and I'm not sure if it was that important.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Hall, do you support the school district sinking fund?
From what I read yesterday, I would support it because the funds, as they're currently outlined, would go far to help secure the safety of the students in our building. And that's what we need in order for kids to feel secure and for parents to feel comfortable that their children are well taken care of in this district.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Lucino, do you support the school's sister sinking fund?
I'm sorry, I have to abstain from answering this question only because I am unfamiliar at this time with the school's sinking fund.
Thank you, Ms. Lucino. Mr. Curley, the sinking fund?
Well, here we go with honesty. I know what it is. I'm sorry, I hope. I've been, you know, remember I was in a school back in the seventies. But let me tell you this, that any fund, I don't care if it's a sinking fund or a raising fund or a left and right fund, any fund that would help our children is worth looking at and worth spending the money.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Next question will go first to Ms. Hall. How do you feel the city can improve communication with residents?
One of the ways we can increase communication with residents is making sure they are aware of all of the many outlets and mediums that they can use. I know I use Nextdoor, we use Facebook, and having a calendar and a page where they can interact with. And encourage people to come out to city council meetings, to school board meetings, so that everyone is informed. Once we do that and we encourage everyone's participation, we can see growth in everything that we do. There's more than one voice in the city and all voices need to be heard.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Lucino, how do you feel the city can improve communication with residents?
There's a lot of ways the city probably can improve communication with residents. I believe there's some of our things that we need to change that maybe would be done in the past. I think we need to spread through the internet more and moving up more far away from the television. Most people these days, a lot of people don't even have cable, use internet. So we need to make sure we focus our meetings, our, I need newsletters or anything, getting them all out there onto social media websites. And trying to keep the residents informed going that route instead of the ways that we used to. Because times have changed and so has the way people find their news and keep, stay informed of all things that are going on.
Thank you, Ms. Lucino. Mr. Curley?
Same question.
Same question, please.
Okay, yeah, there are several ways. One idea that I was thinking about. And a lot of cities have, they think of a town hall meeting every quarter. And they could have it at city hall, they could have it here if you get a big crowd. And the folks can tell us what's going on at the city hall level. So a town hall meeting, quarter, would be nice. A newsletter. AK Homeowners Group has a newsletter about every quarter and we get a news of what's going on. There's a lot of interesting articles in that. Certainly cable, that would be good. They do have cable on there, that you could go there. But anything that, of communication now that would help the folks, you know, not everybody has cable. So a newsletter and a press and town hall meeting would probably be my one, two choice.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Mr. Edwards, how do you feel the city can improve communication with residents?
First of all and foremost, I've been saying this in all forms, transparent, transparency. Without that, we already defeated what have you. And that's a big problem. As well as honesty. We have to be straight and honest with the people. And not just say things and blow people off just to get rid of people. And always to stay connected to the community. As I was thinking, and activities are good, but everybody has different things that they do. Everybody's not the light. I was thinking, because I'm not familiar with one being in East Point, even something as simple as have a, it's not a national day, have a day here in East Point for the dogs that utilize our parks and what have you, for dog owners. And come to a park and have one or two days or three days or something, whatever it may be worked out.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. We'll have one more question and then we'll go to the closing statements. The last question, and this will go first to Ms. Lucino. What is your plan for abandoned homes lost to bad taxes?
Two things I mentioned briefly earlier. The city council has started a tax reversion committee. So we're so far with that tax reversion, we're working on a policy. And we're hoping with that policy, we're making some dollars, fixing up the homes in the city of East Point and turn them over and selling to homeowners. In the past, because we've had so many and because we didn't have the financial means, a lot of times it was sold in route to investors. And we wanna get away from this policy and get more homeownership, even if it's an investor that's locally involved and have come from a country or different state that actually got some investment in the city of East Point. It would be a lot better for our community. Starting by fixing up these homes and improving our neighborhoods and the way these homes look, will increase property values and will help neighborhoods become stronger and stronger more.
Thank you, Ms. Lucino. Mr. Curley, your plans for abandoned homes lost to taxes?
I like what she just said. I like it. Because in the past, exactly, they sold all of these homes to a corporation, if you will, maybe fifty or a hundred. And you know what they did with that? They made him, who knows, to Hawaii or wherever, to some island. And they didn't care about those houses. And they changed that. The city council that are sitting here changed that. I think that's a great idea. Thank you, council, for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Mr. Edwards, what is your plan for abandoned homes lost to bad taxes?
I think it's a good, a great concern as well, that it need to be addressed, need to be looked into and handled in the best way possible for us to be able to reap the loss, the cost and what have you, and putting the heads together and coming up with a great plan. And putting in the right people, looking toward and forward to having the right people in our neighborhoods and what have you, to make it away from where they will understand, you know, this is a town that's a family town and what have you. And how we appreciate it and our passion and our love toward it and what have you. And so we're looking for people that make a difference, that have the same ideas and understanding as we have and what have you. They're not looking for just an easy place to come where you can set up a drug base and things of that sort and what have you. And I think if we do that with the right policemen and what have you, I think we would accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Hall, your plans for abandoned homes lost to bad taxes?
One of the things that we should look at is prevention. Because if we can prevent someone from losing a home and being, going into abandonment because of taxes, and I agree with Ms. Lucino that that plan works as well. But if we can prevent a person from losing a home, to start with by finding different incentives to helping them stay there, I think we can encourage people to not abandon their homes simply because they cannot pay their taxes. So with that, I would love to see everyone in a home enjoying all homeownership and being, having an investment interest in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And now we'll go to the two-minute closing statements and we will start in reverse order of the opening statements. So Ms. Hall, please, your two-minute closing statement.
Thanks again, everyone, for coming out. Looking out at you is kinda hard to see people because of the lights. But I had an opportunity to speak my heart and I hope that you will see that sometimes we get a fresh perspective. Because if you're too close to the forest, you don't see the trees. So I'm looking forward to serving you, the residents of East Point. And I'm looking forward to engaging with everyone, creating that atmosphere in which everyone will be comfortable. One of the things I really want you to pay attention to is our ranked trans voting. You may not rank me number one as your preference, but please rank me number two.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Edwards, your two-minute closing, please.
Thank you again for coming. I would like to again address the vitality of our neighborhoods. East Point is a great city. Been here going on about sixteen years, getting close to twenty-five years. And I've seen some changes and what have you, and it concerns me. And I know things, the world is changing and these are things that we're gonna have to start looking at and addressing and what have you. Is the change that's coming about. And these changes, to look forward to how we can move forward. Again, we're not industrial, we've got to look for things that's gonna help us as a community that we can build up on and that we can put interest in to where it benefits us. And once we do that, I think for the people that's been here for fifty years and for forty years and what have you, that have kept up the property and have kept up their love and their passion for the city. Because this has been the background, this is where we've continued to hold up as well as we're holding up now. But people are up in age now, those that have still been fifty or sixty years. So they're not gonna always be here, so they're gonna bring about another change. And what are we gonna, how are we gonna be ready for that change? These are the things we're gonna have to start looking at and what have you. And as well as what's coming into our city. And how are we being diverse enough to be able to adapt to the different changes and different ways and what have you that we're gonna have to face and deal with? And love and homeownership and neighbors and what have you. I think the strongest way we can do that, everybody showing a concern for where we live. And we don't have to be like everybody else because everything, everybody's not the same. But for this city, we have, should have a certain standard.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And Mr. Curley, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Again, thank you all for coming out. Fifty-five years I've been in this city, there's been a lot of changes. And I'm here to tell you, there are all those changes that have been good. Good neighbors, good people who move into our city and incredibly, some people move out for whatever reason they have. And we have adopted a couple slogans, haven't we? "East Point, no better place to live." "East Point, no better place to learn." And I'm not gonna talk about what I've done or what I've written. I wanna talk about how beautiful this city is. And I want you to look on the bright side of what we have. There are so many great things that we can do. One thing you can do is support your local business, local means, in East Point. They, you talk about diversity. There are so many places in East Point that you can be totally satisfied regardless of what you need. So I'm asking you to do that. I've been around a long time. I'll be eighty-three years old this February. But I got a life, a lot of life in me and I owe that to the Holy Spirit that keeps me going. And when he decides that I've done enough, he's gonna tell me. And he's gonna say, "My job went down." And let me just close with this. You said the mother's Teresa, didn't you? Now it's Saint Teresa. And Saint Teresa said, "Love isn't love until you're given away." Got this.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. And Ms. Lucino, two minutes, please.
First of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Congress, East Point Public Schools, and all of the residents that made this event possible today. I appreciate every single one of you guys coming out here for this event. It is so important for you, all of your candidates, hear what your candidates have to say before you walk into that polling session on November fifth. I'm hoping that I can count on your support in November. I am a resident of the city of East Point for thirty years. I raised my family in the city of East Point because I love this city and I think it's an absolutely fantastic place to raise a family. I wanna continue to keep East Point great. I wanna keep East Point strong. And I will do the best I can to make sure we do also keep an balanced budget and keeping our streets and stations.
Thank you, Ms. Lucino. And that concludes the first portion of tonight's candidate forum.